And they did. They did. And spaces they were. And. 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 It's like. So. And. And then.
We were.
It was.
In the restroom.
Exactly. So, okay. For. It was. This place. Cardboard on cardboard. And so, the worship. To work that. And she went to two. The A. Tommy's not it. She said. She said.
You don't.
He called the. I brought her pistol there. Um. They came. Two.
Well, this won't be funny. Okay.
Bill ain't gonna be here either, Ray.
Who?
Bill ain't gonna be here either. No.
My God, we gotta wait.
Uh-huh.
We gotta wait trade with him.
I'm late. Hey. Oh, are you? Thank you. Thank you. Six. Sorry, just saying. I'm down. As you live.
Yeah.
And he's. And.
Be good, Jim. Like. I got in the.
I just get startled, Mike.
Chain link fancy one. But I. I don't know where they've been. Little weird. Just. Admiral. And I got down to a pro.
We're also. You have friends.
I'm in. Anyway, that thing spun out to me. Put me into that chain link fancy night. I'd say give. Yeah, that's zero turns. Anything spin out, we could have anywhere. I'd get wrong. Get. Chain off the back of people from the middle.
True.
Scamp me out. Oh, boy.
Elsens, Mr. How's how are you? Thank you.
Yeah. Bush. Yeah. Yeah.
I promise I'm not reading.
We just got sleep.
It's really okay.
Very important. I haven't known it that night. Yeah.
Sorry.
(cough) Our buddy Donnie ain't gonna be here?
Oh, he's with us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
What are you up to, Ray?
You all right?
Enjoy. Welcome, everybody.
We're waiting to be nosy.
Ray, you've got bad much of a habit of waiting to be nosy. Make sure this fertile foe is off. Amanda, this thing was working a few minutes.
I don't say anything. But she's. Say it last. Shh. Shh. Shh.
Ah. What you know, Chris?
I'm standing right here today. I didn't even know.
Hold on. What is that?
I'm hoping he can hold it sooner than it over ride.
He didn't have something. He's in a free rack. And the plus. He's free. And he should leave. (cough)
Give chairs. Ray, no. Where was this place?
Nah, that's all.
We'll survive.
Thirty plus. People would be interested, I know. Their change used to get with the. Yeah. Just thought. And sharing. It looks. I try to see that. You know. And, um. Crouch or something. Do you? You could play. They say. You never know what.
Okay, folks, it is seven o'clock. First of all, if there's any public comment you may need to sign up, please come down here and do so. Okay? Silence your cell phones, if you would, please. I will now call this meeting to order. We'll stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will observe a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. I want to welcome each and everyone here. Looks like we've got a pretty good crowd. We have one commissioner who is on vacation this week, so he might be watching through our streaming.
Nah.
But if he is, welcome.
Hi, Bill.
Yep. Okay. The first item we have is our approval of the agenda. Changes or additions or deletions to the agenda will be seven B will be personnel under seven. There under Brooke will have part B.
One and four, I think, three and four, Jan Lounsbury.
Yeah, and number four, we will have a four B. Which will be.
Jan Lounsbury and Sherri Perry for senior target legislature.
Yeah, senior target legislative report will be for B. Okay, any other changes or additions?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the amended agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gentry for the approval of the agenda, second by Commissioner Wackel. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Agenda is approved with two changes. Public comment, we have no sign up. Thank you. Ms. Ruth Price.
I got you. I can prove it.
Oh, okay, hold on one second. Hold on. I'm getting ahead of myself. Approval of the June 2018 special and regular meeting minutes. Everyone has had an opportunity to look over the minutes and review them as such. Any changes or any corrections to the minutes?
Mr. Chair, having reviewed all the minutes in question, I move that the minutes be approved for each of the meetings as submitted.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Wackel for the approval of the June 2018 special and regular meeting.
I second that.
Second by Commissioner Gentry, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, the minutes are approved for June 2018. Okay, now, Ms. Ruth Price.
And Barbara Rice is with me. Um, I just want to thank the commissioners. I've been the ombudsman, the long-term care ombudsman, which is an advocate for people living in long-term care for five years. And I want to thank you all for the support and all the wonderful volunteers you've sent me. I'm moving on to the caregiver support program at Land of Sky, so I'm gonna miss these great volunteers. And Barbara is the chair, and she's gonna give the report for the year.
Okay.
I'm sure all of you received a copy.
Yes, ma'am.
As you did last year. Um, Linda Freeman has continued to try to make sure that each of the residents in the family care homes receive their rights, the things that they're entitled to, a place to live, the right to, um, talk to their families on the phones. All of these things, uh, she has worked, she has gotten birth certificates, fishing license. It's all listed on the report of the things that she has done to help these people so they have the rights completed. Um, they, uh, we go, um, once a quarter and visit these places. We tend to spend most of our time on the family care units because the nursing homes and Madison Mars Hill Retirement are covered by heavy state regulations, and they're pretty much well taken care of. Um, we have different groups that go into the homes and do things for them. And we, um, Linda and Shelley Lindrum, who is over the adult care. She and Linda did a wonderful Christmas program. Each one of our residents received a Christmas gift. And we need to discuss and try to plan so they have more activities. That's one of the things they're lacking in. We're kinda isolated out here as far as going to things. It has improved over the last few years. They are getting to go places and do things a little more. But, um, these people are important. They're in our county, and they're our responsibility to take care of. And I do hope that you will just read these and know that someone is watching out for these residents that are here in this county. Any questions?
Barbara, thank you and everybody else for all the good work that you do. Really appreciate it.
Well, we'll try. We keep trying.
I know you do.
We don't always get anything, but we do try because it is, it does look bad for our county if they're living here and they're not, don't have a clean place, and don't have clothes, and they're, if they're hungry or anything. So, that's mainly what we try to be a part of and make sure that they're in contact with families and have things to make them feel happy here. And we thank you very much. If there's ever fifty cents, we'll take it.
All right. Got you.
Me too. Stan, me coding? Sorry. No, wait a minute. We've got, wait a minute, we've got a B.
Yeah.
Huh.
Sure.
Ms. Jan Lounsbury.
Thank you. Oh, okay.
I keep. I keep putting. Yeah, let me have this one. It's got everything on it.
Evening, Jen.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me to, uh, come present this report to you this evening. And also, thank you for appointing myself and Sherri Perry as the senior target legislators for Madison County. We, uh, are getting involved.
Pull the microphone in front of you so that that way, the, on our stream, everybody can hear you.
Okay.
Thanks. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Anyway, we are getting involved in our new roles. And, um, so before I give you our state report, I wanted to share with you some, um, facts, if you can bear with me for a few minutes, um, that I reviewed in, there's a 2018 policy priorities for the National Association of Area Agencies, uh, on aging. And there's some interesting facts in here that I wanted you to be aware of. And, um, every day, ten thousand baby boomers turn sixty-five, or nearly ten million will be doing that in three years. Just think about that. Some of us are already there. By 2030, twenty-three million are one in five people in America will be aged sixty-five or older. And you think 2030, that's a long way off. Actually, it's only twelve years away. So. This historic demographic shift already is evident in many regions of the U.S., especially in the rural areas. It's starting to, um, have an impact on service, on services that are provided for seniors. So, available services have to keep up with the growing need. By 2035, I think of how many years away is that? Twenty thirty-five, all communities must be prepared to address these realities. And this fact, for the first time in our nation's history, the population of adults aged sixty and older will outnumber people younger than twenty. Remember when we were so young? That seemed so far away, but now it's knocking at our door. So, we are on the road to significantly, to become a significantly older nation. So, it is important that we prepare for that. And so, that's what Sherri and I are trying to be a voice for Madison County in doing on the state level. So. Um, I gave you a golden rod sheet mail a month or so ago, and I don't know if you have read these. These were the proposed legislative priorities. Well, when we were at the state meeting in June, we were given the outcomes of those legislative priorities. So, I'll share those with you. The increase in the HCC BG funding, which is the Community Care Block Grant. There was a request for seven million dollars in recurring funds. And on June the eleventh, the state legislator approved four million nine hundred and thirty-four thousand three hundred and ninety-four of those, uh, funds. And I have a handout. I have a copy of this for you as well. Sorry, forgot to give you these. So, you can follow along with me.
Thank you.
Thank you. And those are recurring funds, and it tells you where they were pulled from as well. Uh, there was a request for increased funding for senior centers, and they approved four new senior centers across the state. And those are mainly down in the eastern part of the state, Columbus County, Lincoln County, Granville County, and Pearson County. There was a request to sustain, sustain and expand the project CARE. Project CARE is an alternative, uh, caregiver alternative to running on empty is what it stands, is an acronym for. And what it means is giving respite care to people who care for individuals with Alzheimer's and dementia. And so, um, that was sustained, but hadn't been changed since, um, June the eleventh, anyway. And strengthen the fund of North Carolina Adult Protective Services. So, as we become older, adult protective services are gonna be even more important, are bodily important as they are today. So, they added a position on the state level, uh, in adult protective services and guardianship social worker position to the Division of Aging and Adult Services. And that included money from the Social Service Block Grant, federal funding for DSS to provide additional guardianship services across the state. So, I don't know how much of that actually comes to Madison County. Um, reestablished the Study Commission on Aging. Apparently, in nineteen eighty-seven, there was a study approved to, um, for delivery of services to older adults and recommend improvements. And so, they, um, in November of twenty seventeen, they approved a subcommittee on aging, and that continued through the short term in twenty eighteen. Okay. So, at this meeting in June that Sherri and I went to, um, new resolutions were, were being introduced. Each region in the state submits, submits resolutions that will be amended and then sent to the state legislators to review and approve or disapprove. And so, we are entering that process where these resolutions were submitted. There were forty-nine solutions, um, presented, and the, um, state legislative air body is, uh, divided into six different committees. And I and Sherri are on the, um, Long-Term Care Committee. And being a retired registered nurse, and Sherri being very active in her current role with, um, long-term care, it was a, it was a good fit. So, we, we took the resolutions that they had submitted. Each committee could come back with three to submit for the final drafting. So, we had eight, I think, to review, and some of them were, um, combined. So, what happened in October is those, those resolutions will be narrowed down to even, uh, eight. And then, then, um, they'll be rewritten and revised, and we'll finally see the final outcome at our meeting in January, I think. So, it's a process. So, you don't always get what you ask for, but you try. And I said, why only five? We have forty-nine. Why only five? Well, you can only put five on a page, and you don't want to overwhelm the state legislators. So, you have five, so it's concise, and they can look at it and move on to their next job.
Okay.
So, um, and, let's see. There's a couple of meetings. Um, Thursday, this coming Thursday, July the twelfth, the Regional Aging Advisory Council meets, and Madison is hosting that meeting this, this month. And it's going to be at the Mars Hill County, Mars Hill Library. And all of you are invited to attend if you have time and would like to. We'll have reports from, uh, the counties in the region.
What time is that?
Uh, ten until noon.
I'm sorry.
Ten till noon.
Ten till noon.
Ten till noon. So, you're welcome to come in here, what's going on in Madison, Henderson, Buncombe, and Transylvania County. Okay? Of July the twenty-sixth, the Land of Sky is hosting what they're calling Friends of Residence in Long-Term Care. And this is to discuss long-term care issues and possible solutions. Excuse me. And then in October, um, we go back to Chapel Hill, excuse me, for the next senior legislative meeting. Any questions?
Thank you very much for representing our county web and doing your duty.
You're welcome. It's a pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, Tim.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have with me tonight Kim Kelly, and Kim is our billing expert at the Health Department. And she helped lead us through our fee setting process. I did a lot of the time-consuming work that went on behind the scenes, so I would like to acknowledge all the work she did with that. And she can answer any complicated questions that come up. So, just like with any business, uh, we need to evaluate what our services are costing us. And in your packet, you do have a list of what we are paying for services such as labs, internal services. So, we went through a process of getting an internal team at the Health Department and evaluated, um, what procedures were costing. And you'll notice some things we had to increase the cost of because our cost had increased. And there are some things through, uh, our labs that were reduced because, uh, that rate that we're paying has been reduced. So, we created a consistent formula based upon what insurances pay and, um, came up with the new charges that we are proposing. This formula was shared at our last Board of Health meeting, and the Board of Health has approved the fee schedule that is before you. We're here tonight to ask for your approval for the fee schedule.
Okay, any questions? Tim?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the fee schedule as proposed and presented by the Madison County Health Department. I will second that motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Wackel, second by Commissioner Gentry for the approval of the proposed fee schedule for 2019 for our Health Department. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Good job. Thank you.
All right, Lori Ray.
I'm here to present the bids that we have received for the 2020 reevaluation. It's required by general statute every eight years. Uh, we've received three bids, three different continents, and, um, I provided those, that information to you. If you have any questions.
You, you had a chance to go over these and look at them real good, Lori.
And I have, yes.
I know the other day you and I were discussing this, and, uh, if you will, just briefly in your own words, all three of these we have, just tell us the pros and cons that you know.
Well, Assessment Solutions of North Carolina, uh, they were the lowest bidder. They, um, the owner is mainly the one person that works on the reavow. There's not a staff involved. Um, had some, um, issues, mainly in some other counties that, um, were not as, um, good as they should have been. Uh, Pearson's appraisal, uh, pros with them, we've used them twice, two thousand four and two thousand twelve. Um, they do have experience with our new software system, with the entry and that sort of thing. And they're really big on customer service. Uh, cons, of course, is the price, but they did offer another option to limit some bonuses that give us a better price. And, um, the Walter Ains, their pros, they're very experienced with their, um, third-party software system. And they have some good recommendations from other counties. Con with that, it's a technicality, they didn't present a bid bond, but they did provide a letter that if they were awarded contract, they would provide bond.
And I may add that the first one up there, that was the one where we would have, would have had to provide extra help to put this information in the system.
Yeah, Kenny stuff would have to.
So, the real cost was going to be higher.
Yeah.
The real cost was to be higher.
Yes. Cause it, we would have had to employ other people or pull people out of our tax office, which would have took away from the duties there. Okay? And you said, though, the second one, the option one A, and that was what again? What was the option?
With Pearson's?
Yes.
Right, they came in at twenty-five on their option one A, twenty-five for parcel. They would not visit, well, they would compare the records if, if the data in our system looks like it's correct. Or they would not necessarily visit every property, or, uh, or they would drive by, and if the square footage appears correct, then they would take a picture, not necessarily get out and do a measuring list. Anything, any new improvements, they would measure list. Or if there were other improvements, like farms or storage buildings, they would, they would measure list and report.
Okay.
So, it would still be more than a desk review? It would actually?
It would be more than a desk review.
And since they've done it before, they've got good, pretty good data, good records for us.
A little superior knowledge.
Yeah, but they would have background and would be able to reasonably do that. Yeah. Um, Lori, you don't see any real issue with Pearson continuing? Would you be happy with Pearson?
Certainly.
Okay.
Do you have preference between the two?
Um, well, I, I believe I would choose Pearson's mainly because we do know them. And they did offer some options, and, um, after he's, after I talked with him the other day, he was, you know, some of the things I had questions about, he said, we're, we're gonna do what, what we need to do. So, any reservations I had, he assured me that, that, you know, everything would be taken care of.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the Pearson appraisal bid with the one, what's the actual term, the one A, but option, option one A.
Lori, on that last one there, I know they listed there that it said willing to negotiate.
They had a letter in their, in their package that they would be willing to discuss or negotiate any portion of the, of the RFP, so we would have to initiate that conversation if you.
That really, that really don't, that really don't fall under the order of a sealed bid then, right? If their price was negotiable, they should, they.
Well, they did not provide a listing that shows what they would provide under the first option, you know, they would provide under the second. It was just that they were willing to look at it.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, but you gotta respect them for being willing to.
Oh, yeah, I mean, they.
You know, I don't see that necessarily as a bad thing, but.
No, 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 I don't see it as a bad thing, I just, you know, if they wanted our business, it looks like they would have come at us with their best price instead of a negotiating price.
Well, and gentlemen, this is probably one of the most serious things that we will be doing over the next few years, and I prefer going with somebody who we know, somebody who has a good track record, somebody who we've had good experience with in the past, and that's the reason that I would favor Pearson.
Lori, the, um, first option, not option one A, but the, the higher bid for Pearson, which one would you choose? The top one or the, a little lesser charge? I mean, are we?
If you weren't considering price, of course, I would choose the top one.
Well, I mean, are we, you know, a nice suit's good to wear, but I'd like to have some shoes with it.
Exactly.
So, are we giving up our shoes?
Maybe one. I don't, I don't think that you're gonna, I don't think they're gonna do, they're gonna, they would be more thorough. They would visit more properties, leave more door hangers, that sort of thing.
Well, the thing about visiting properties, I think that's kind of critical because I know there's properties in the county that are not on the tax card.
Exactly.
And people are, they're not, they're not paying taxes on things that other people are simply because we don't know about them. So, you know, if we choose that higher-priced option, we get that, right?
How many were they, did they say the amount that they would go to at that, with that top option?
What do you mean the amount?
The percentage amount of, of.
They would visit, they would visit most improved properties. That means with structures and that sort of thing. Others as needed, if they see anything in the records that looks out of, you know, if you pull up a, um, a property and it's obvious that it's wrong, certainly they'll do site visits on those.
So, neither one of, neither one of, any of these options then would guarantee that they're going to set foot on every property in the county, correct?
That's correct.
Do you feel that the top bid there that they sent of the six forty-seven would be more beneficial to you and the Tax Department and our taxpayers?
I think, yes, because I really think it's, it's an opportunity to, to really look at all, most, most of the property in the county. And if there is anything, of course, you're going to do better with a fuller realm than you would limited.
I think we owe it to the taxpayers to give them the best that we can give them here because it's going to affect every one of them.
It costs eighty-five thousand dollars more to get the, the better product.
Yeah.
Bottom line.
Remind, refresh my memory, what do we have budgeted for this?
We, um, I'm looking at the financial report, and it shows four hundred thousand.
And transfer the money.
So, you have a.
The time I had to do this financial, so about a hundred and thirty thousand is also, there's five hundred and thirty in that account right now.
Because of last month's budget amendment, correct?
And how do they expect to get paid? I mean, wait, string this out over twenty years?
It's over the course of the contract. It's based on how many properties they visit, so much per month, so it wouldn't all fall in one budget year.
And also regarding that, that amount that's in the reval fund, that is an amount that is required, that's to make counties put the money aside for that between years. I know you all know that, but just for the sake of the public. So, we had gotten it in two thousand fifteen to approximately the amount it had cost us for the two thousand twelve reval, and then we backed off, how much was being put aside, year-end budget amendment, you added another hundred and thirty thousand, so we're looking at a, um, another hundred or so that needs to become, somewhere within the next year and a half. And while that is significant money, you're looking at it over an eight-year period, and you're looking at how it impacts ten million dollars in annual revenue. So, the accuracy of, and by the time it comes around, it might be more than that in annual revenue, but, so it's a, it's a big jump, but the consequences are significant for that amount of money.
Well, if we amateurize, amateur, well, I don't know why I can't say that word all of a sudden.
You said it.
But, you know, if, if you do that over the eight years, I mean, we're talking about ten grand a year essentially, as far as investment goes.
Gentlemen, now that I have the hard copy in front of me, I would like to amend my initial motion that we take the Pearson appraisal services, six hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollar recommendation. That is a projected cost of twenty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents per parcel. That's the exact detail of what my motion will be.
Let's start with that.
Discussion? So, if we're going to consider doing, instead of option A, which is, or, excuse me, instead of option one A, which, which is kind of a reduced services package from them, um, you, you've got, you still have, you're putting Wample back in the mix now, if you're going to a deal where you want every, you know, where essentially every property touched.
No.
Are we not?
No. No.
Their, their option was more in line with Pearson's option.
Okay, I got you. All right. Very good, thank you. I stand corrected.
Any more discussion?
Comparing apples to apples.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Gentry, second by Commissioner Rice, for the reevaluate, revaluation bids for Pearson's appraisal services, which is the six hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollar bid. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Okay.
So, the first, good evening.
Good evening.
So, the first thing I've got before you for your approval is the two thousand eighteen, nineteen State Salary Plan for Social Services and the Health Department. Each year, in accordance with North Carolina General Statute one twenty-six nine V, the Board of Commissioners must approve the salary ranges for positions subject to the State Human Resources Act. The departments subject to this plan are DSS and the Health Department. To move forward with submitting this plan to the state, I'm asking for your approval of the two thousand eighteen, nineteen State Salary Plan for DSS and the Health Department.
Any discussion for Brooke on this? Mr. Turney, is this, you, do you look over this, or is this something that, since it's in state?
Beyond my pay grade. I prefer to broach on this one.
This is, we, we had to do this a hundred years ago, the state made a law, that you can either, you can follow their state salary plan, or, which is much higher paid than what ours is, or you can work within your local financial constraints and come up with your own, and you have to, if you do that, you have to submit it to the state every year for approval.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the two thousand eighteen, nineteen State Salary Plan for DSS and the Health Department, as submitted.
Okay.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rice, second by Commissioner Gentry, for the approval of two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen State Salary Plan for DSS and Health Department?
Discussion? So, we've got, just to, just to verify for the public out there, we are in compliance with these, and this doesn't, this doesn't really change anything with what we're doing, this just kind of makes it all official.
Yeah, we just, every year, we have a spreadsheet the state sends us with all of the state titles, so we plug it in, and we've got our calculations for what our adopted plan has always been, and, uh, that's all it is, it's a big old spreadsheet.
We're in compliance with the law.
And you send it to them, and they approve it, and then you can write the checks at the lower right. Right?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the approval of the State Salary Plan for DSS and Health Department. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Okay. The second thing I have for you in personnel, um, as many of you, or as you all know, we've had a recent, an employee that recently passed away in our IT department, and the IT director has worked on a plan to reallocate duties within the department, and so I'd like to move forward with posting a redesigned vacancy, and in order to do that, I'm asking for your approval of the reallocation of duties within the IT department.
I move that we approve the recommendations of our HR director.
Second.
We have a motion for approval by Commissioner Gentry, second by Commissioner Wackel, for the approval of the recommendation from our HR department for the IT department. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Thanks, Brooke.
Hope you get to feel better. Evening, Rhea.
Good evening.
Hey, Rhea.
Before I get started with my stuff, I did want to give you one update. Got a lovely email this morning from the State Department of Health and Human Services regarding our two thousand seventeen audit findings. They sent a letter today saying they reviewed the findings of the auditor, they reviewed what Connie proposed as our corrective action plan, and they agree with it all.
Yeah, that's good.
So, just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Good.
That's awesome. Now, on to the good stuff. I have, first for you, the twenty seventeen, or the June two thousand eighteen financial report. I prepared this about the twenty-eighth of June, before I went on vacation last week, so we would have everything for you. So, I know there's two or three days of information missing in here. This is the best information I had at the time. You will see on page one, our total unassigned and unrestricted bank balance of four point three million dollars. Three point three million of that belonging to the general fund, eight hundred and fifty thousand to landfill and a hundred and eighty thousand to nine-on-one. With that also, one point eight million in forty-fourty-two set aside. If you flip to page two, June is a very heavy spending month. We are trying to, I'm going to use the word exhaust money in our budget. That's not a great word, but you will see here, it does show for month-to-date and year-to-date about a one point three million dollar loss. Keep in mind, we have three months of sales tax money that will come in in July, August, and September, that are for the FY eighteen, so that, we are projecting that to cover that one point three loss that I'm showing right now, and I look forward to giving you updates, David, hopefully saying the same thing sometime in, in October. You will also see there, we, per our last budget amendment, in Ju, in June, we liquidated the contingency fund to put towards the reval, so there's no money there. Skipping down to landfill, the year-to-date profit at this point of a hundred and seven thousand, and then nine-on-one emergency telephone services is a twenty-nine thousand dollar profit.
I can just, very good explanation, Rhea, but for the sake of public.
Yes.
The contingency fund, contingency line was the money we had set aside for the entirety of the last fiscal year to cover anything unexpected.
Correct.
We ended up not needing it, therefore it was able to have.
Yes.
I, I know everybody knows that, but it's not, we didn't wipe anything out that's long-term.
No, thank you. Thank you for that.
That's, yeah, that's better. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Going back to the top, the expenditures to date, year-to-date, we've spent twenty-two point seven million dollars, which is about ninety-three percent of the budget. Do we expect any expenses to creep in?
Absolutely. There, again, this was on June twenty-eighth, we, we are paying bills that are, were invoiced even today and next week, and probably even one more week, that were invoiced in June, so those expenses will go up a little. I don't anticipate a million, you know, I don't think it'll be that much. I don't have a good estimate on what that number will be, but there will be, there will still be a few more expenditures to come into that.
Because we're about six hundred thousand less than what we spent last year, so you think it'll be close to the seventeen-year number?
It could be, it very well could be. There was a half a payroll that will be rolled back, that, because we got paid, no, yes, we got paid on June thirtieth, so that was for the week before, two weeks prior, so there's a half a payroll that'll be rolled back in there, that is in that last year's number, plus a few things that people bought at the end of the year, so it, it could very well be six hundred thousand, but.
So, then that puts us needing two million dollars. We're going to find two million dollars?
Well, I'm, like I said, I'm guessing one point three in about sales tax, that doesn't include anything else that we, we received this month that would be for last month. I also know what the DMV revenues are a couple months behind for taxes. I know there were some grant funds that, that will come in, in this month because we have to spend it before we get it reimbursed, so I'm, I'm trying to be confident, but not overly optimistic that I, I think we're going to be real close to breaking even, hopefully a little better than that.
And, and I think, Rhea, when you consider forty-fourty-two funds, which as we've discussed before, that has to come from fund balance.
Correct.
When you consider the amount that was budgeted to come for forty-fourty-two, which was a half million or so, that sort of reduces that number as well. It's been tight, and we've known, you know, we had a three hundred, three to four hundred thousand dollar drop in inmate revenues we had to deal with and some other things, but I think with some of the reductions we made in various areas, um, depending on the payroll issue, we compensated and prepared for that, but you won't really know till, the sales tax is the biggest one that's out there. And that's from looking at how it's gone for three years or so that I think that, what we've kind of gotten to those periods.
Rhea?
Yes, sir.
Looking at the list, we have some inflatables, fun time inflatables that were used for, I guess, our sheriff's kickoff to a safe summer, is that correct? Looking at the list, we have some inflatables, fun time inflatables that were used for, I guess our sheriff's kickoff to a safe summer, is that correct?
Some of that, well, we're, part of that was for the sheriff's department, it was six hundred and fifty dollars, and another seventeen hundred dollars was for the library, for an event they did.
So the library had, had used them also?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Forrest, while everybody else is looking at this, do we, um, are we, is there still a prospect of us being able to ever get these numbers up so the people can see them?
There he is.
I don't mean the people, I mean, you know, the, the, our people who come live, I should say, I didn't mean it to sound.
Yeah, Amanda has worked on that some. It's a matter of where the screen goes, and it's also a matter of getting everyone to present information that's ready to go out there with appropriate cover memos and those sorts of things.
Okay. Good deal, I just wanna make sure we're still.
That's the biggest issue, is the consistency of presentation.
Good deal, I just wanna make sure it wasn't, had gone by the wayside.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion or any thing for Rhea on this? I mean, Rhea, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay.
Okay. Next thing I have for you is budget amendment number one. We have talked over the past couple meetings about the commissary revenues from the sheriff's department. We have nailed down a number of forty three thousand dollars, forty three thousand fifty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents, that the sheriff has in his commissary account that does belong to the county. And the sheriff is, has requested that and believe Kerry was cutting the check last week while I was out, to move that money from that commissary account into our accounts. So this budget amendment is to reflect that additional revenue. I believe the arrangement, correct me if I'm wrong, Forrest, is for him to buy vehicles with that. And he had already purchased one vehicle this year last week. And we took the money out of inmate medical to make sure we, that he could get it, it was a great deal, he had to move fast on it. So you'll see the split up, it's, but there remained twenty thousand in vehicles, capitalally vehicles, and then reimbursed the inmate medical for the money we borrowed last week from there.
And the sheriff delayed a week, he could've done it the last week of the last fiscal year, since this isn't general fund money, it wouldn't have mattered. But it was kind enough to wait a week since it wasn't in that situation to, cause it wasn't time to get a budget amendment, get those things done. So this is all, this is a good thing with money that is not tax money going to more than need expense, and so, yeah.
And at that price, am I, am I safe to assume that these are vehicles that are new to us, or are they brand-new vehicles?
It was a new new, it was a two thousand eighteen Dodge Charger from Elderton.
Excellent.
Good deal.
From Elderton, really?
Yep, I said the same thing.
I'm fed to buy some vehicles from Elderton and this, I've never gotten one for that price. Very good, excellent.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve budget amendment number one.
I have a motion for approval for budget amendment number one. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Wechel, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Budget amendment one is approved.
And the last thing I have for you is the June two thousand eighteen tax releases and refunds.
Three names.
Yeah.
Just three names.
A lot of money.
Years.
Okay, any discussion for Rhea on the property releases?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the releases as presented.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Rice for the approval of the property releases for July two thousand eighteen.
I'll second that motion.
A motion by Commissioner Rice for property releases, second by Commissioner Gentry, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
And the last thing I want to mention is, as of yesterday, all June rents have been received.
Okay, good.
Sure is, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is a good ni- good night to be having our sort of theme as it just sort of worked out on aging. Here from the community advisory council, here from our senatorial legislators about the importance of that issue because as Ms. Lowesberry said, the trend is faster in rural communities, we're a growing community, and we have to be prepared for that. And one thing that I was reminded of as she was presenting is that the area agency on aging through Land of Sky has set aside some funding this fall to do a simple countywide aging plan update that, that will be going on here in a few months. That'll be very beneficial and important to you and everyone who ever sits in your seat or, or my seat in looking at how the county's gonna change in the next twenty, ten, twenty years and farther. And I wanna talk about what a good community we live in, cause I got to attend a really fun event and Paul was there as well, he was on the front page of the paper, but the nutrition, community services, meal sites and nutrition and seniors, active living center had a really good countywide picnic back June twenty eighth, it was a Fourth of July event. And it's the third or fourth time they've done it, they do it, now they do it at Marsh Hill Baptist Church and people from all the sites in the county were there, the level of energy that is going on in that program and, and the increase that we've seen the last few years is really a good direction for our county. We had people there singing, connecting with each other from different parts of the county. There are field trips going on on a regular basis for these folks and that department, that event was really put on, ELD Heinmiller, of course, is the department head. And, and the event, Angie Allison, Edwina Craig, and Lorraine Griffin really worked to pull that together. Everyone at Marsh Hill Baptist, many volunteers from there helping to make that work, but it's just a really fun deal. And comes around once a year and reminder next year can be sent out about it. But it shows a good direction, that program's headed in the county, that department increases with transportation driver time. But a reduction over time in home meetings, where we know there is an increase there, so it's not all perfect. But there's gonna be more and more importance to that department, and I just wanna compliment the work that everyone there is doing. I know Kathy's with us tonight, she's one of those who's doing a really good job as the fiscal officer for that department, she's doing a whole lot more than that. And it's a good direction we're headed, and it's fun to go to those events to see some of the good, exciting things that are going on in our county as our departments work to serve our citizens. A few updates since the last time you all met, Crossroads Parkway, sent you all an email last night. The Connector Road in Marsh Hill, as you know, there had been a gap in the funding that had been awarded from Appalachian Regional Commission. They had awarded one point seven million dollars for the project three years ago through a grant the town of Marsh Hill received. When bids came in, they were over three million dollars, so there was a funding gap. And the project was gonna be put back through a scoring process this fall with sort of unknown results potentially. And as part of the hometown strong initiative from the governor's office, we really focused on this project as one, since that program focuses on projects where this, some sort of technicality has slowed something down, we really made it a priority. At your May meeting, I think four, three of you were at that meeting and you voted on a resolution of support to DOT. We got word last week that DOT has provided an additional nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding. The Appalachian Regional Commission has provided an additional six hundred thousand, in addition to the one point seven million, that total is three point two five million, which should meet the cost of the project. They expect complete design in the fall, complete right-of-way acquisition in the winter months, with construction to begin in the spring of two thousand nineteen. That's a really good outcome for the future of Marsh Hill and our entire county, and it's gonna impact anybody within a short drive there. It's a, over a twenty-year project, probably should've been completed when the road was built or widened to begin with. So that is a really good thing to be closer to having checked off the list, with no, no dirt as of yet. The.
It looks promising, that's.
It's looking more promising than it has looked in a, in a long time, so that's very good. Hopefully we'll, we won't be like Swin County, wait them long, but.
They had a pretty nice check though.
It worked out pretty well.
It was worth the wait, I think.
Drug, we'll find a road somewhere else, we got other, we've got other roads we've got, they haven't done as well. So the drug court you all funded in your budget, of course, a portion of the salary for a coordinator with, to be shared with Madison, Yancey, and Mitchell Counties. Yancey County included that in their budget for next year as well, and Mitchell County has committed to amend their budget when the time comes, so they've agreed to do it, they just did it a little differently. Would probably did it a little more conservatively and cautiously from a budget standpoint, but it really won't matter because all three counties are wanting to do this. So, met in Yancey County today with Yancey County manager and representatives from VIA Health regarding treatment providers and other needs for the program and kind of the timeline for helping get this set up, because there has to be a place. When people are assigned to this program or sent us by a judge, there has to be a place that can take them. And there are, we have a shortage of mental health services in all three of our counties. And the discussion with VIA as the local management entity for our western, I think twenty-three to twenty-five counties, has has been, how do you all make sure, is the one who handles the Medicaid funding and everything that goes to the various providers out there, how do you help bring those in? And they're optimistic, they're working with us on that, they're optimistic that just having these additional clients in each county will help stabilize that for a provider, and they have the ability to entice those people that come here as well as if someone's making a lot of money in Buckle County, you're gonna spend a few days in Madison, Mitchell, and Yancey. So that's sort of how that's moving along. We'll work with Yancey, Mitchell County over the next month, VIA has an agreement between the counties and any other entities on exactly how this will work. Where, who's gonna employ the person, what the job description will be, that sort of thing. We hope to get that position, all personnel matters worked out by August, and have that position filled by late September, early October, which will be here before we know it. And be able to have the program hopefully up and running, you know, but there are a lot of things that need to be done and dealing with a lot of different stakeholders, but it's moving forward very well. Didn't wanna update you on that work that continues and didn't wanna confirm that the other two counties are on board, so that's moving forward. I have talked with you all previously about, several times during the budget process, about the prospect of housing juvenile inmates at jail. I think that, that looks like a, a good opportunity for the county with the Fourth of July holiday and the end of the year. It's been tough to get contact with people to sort of answer a few questions, mostly pertaining to inmate medical, which we have to worry about because we would be responsible for the medical care. But there are other measures to control those costs the sheriff is working on as well. So I feel good that we can get those answers question, those questions answered in the next few days, and we'll get back in touch with you at that point. We do need to, but once those questions are answered, we need to move forward pretty quickly. There's most, you know, the quicker we get it started, there's a training timeline lag before the revenue could come in. But again, first year revenue would make up a little loss from last year to this year, and then going forward for a full year in future years, there'll be additional revenue coming into the county, so there'll be additional revenue. So you all have discussed the pros and cons, there are pros and cons to it, there are pros and cons to any decision that, that can be made regarding any area of the county government. And you'll have to weigh those, but I wanna get you a little more information on the medical piece before you're gonna do that final report. That's all I have for the report. Next item, I think the Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference vote in the vote, and their conference will be in Catala County, which is more convenient than usual for us, that'll be August twenty-third to twenty-fifth. And I think Commissioner Brigman and I attended in two thousand fifteen, we drove all the way to Greenville. And it's a good couple of days of good, it's a good conference. And I encourage y'all, be all, consider attending and look at that in your schedule. There is a assembly they hold on the Saturday of that meeting where they elect officers and vote on legislative agendas, things like that. Depends on the cycle when they'll do that. If you all wish to designate someone as your proxy, you need to do that by August seventeenth. So there's no reason to, to make any, take any action tonight unless you want to, but this is just to put that out there, you'll probably find you do it next month. It's a good event for commissioners, managers, assistant managers, and Yancey County takes a bus down there, everybody with the county attorney goes. Everybody knows.
Cause they can't afford to pay him for twenty-four hours straight, three days, isn't it?
They just don't want me seeing one, they do.
Is that what it means?
Couple of surplus property items. The two properties that are still in, being finalized, one is the breakaway property, they're still dealing with some property line issues. We had, you all had approved an extension that expires in the next couple of weeks. I'd ask you to extend that for another forty-five days. And the rock building in Marsh Hill, I don't think we have yet officially closed and received property.
We communicated.
Okay.
We've got the hustles lines with the school board's attorney.
Okay, so we have to give that extra property due to us first.
On the breakaway, did we not just, did we do a thirty-day extension for them at the last, was that two months ago?
And, and I'm reporting, they have reached out, of course, you know that that's the one that has in it, in more than sixty separate parcels of land. Apparently Mr. Shaw has hired, I think he has hired a firm in Asheville to obtain title insurance for it. And their laws, I mean, they, they, they.
The title insurance firm?
The, the, the law firm, and they said, we don't know where this property's come from, can you help us out? So I've agreed to share all the work that I've done on it with them. And I don't mind doing that if it will expedite the closing for us.
So we don't get any extra kickback for that and then do.
I won't charge you.
Did you get that, Paul? Folsom over there, there.
Yeah.
You don't know if we don't have.
And August is a little later, the, the meeting day falls, middle of the month more so than, our meeting's always fall the seventh or eighth or the fourteenth, and next month, the next fourteenth. So, thirty days.
So we need forty-five. Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant forty-five days.
There's a forty-five day due diligence period for the two properties?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Gentry. Second by Commissioner Rice for the extension on the due diligence period for breakaway in the rock building, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
And the two properties that have gone through the upset process and we have the no more upsets made at highest final bid. One is lot one at Laurel Highlands for thirty-six hundred dollars. And one is lots one oh one and one oh one B for twelve thousand four hundred dollars and ninety-five cents, that getting started at thirty-five hundred dollars, and I think it's been going on.
Since January.
Since January. Since January. And I will point out, it's good to see that go up. How much do those ads cost?
$170 a pop.
So every time we advertise, which we have to do, do to special interests, passing a law that says we have to pull in their print publications to their online publication. But that's, that's the way it works.
They had a better lobbyist than we did on that business. Deeper pockets. On the, I think we're all familiar with Lots 101 and 101B, and anyone who's been regular here at these meetings knows which ones we're talking about. The Laurel Highlands lot, is, was, is there any history there, or is 36, is that our first offer we've had on that, is, what's our?
Laurel Highlands is a subdivision that we have probably foreclosed on numerous lots in that area, and some of them, the access is an issue to get rid of any of those lots. I think Ms. Laurie will agree with me that that's a good thing. Am I right?
The homeowner association dues that we're responsible for on that too?
No, I don't think so.
Not on this one?
I know the real estate agent was real excited we got an offer.
Yeah, well, and I, I thought this was the first time that this one had come through, but I couldn't remember, we looked at so many of them, I just wanted to make sure. So with that being said, I'm going to, would it be appropriate to do both of them in the same motion? I move that we accept both offers and sell these puppies.
I will second that motion.
Now Forrest, does this first one, the Laurel Highlands lot, it goes into an upset bid process?
No, this is the...
Already?
Nobody's...
Oh, okay, okay.
We move this as for final statement.
We have a motion and a second for the final sales approval for these two pieces of property that were discussed. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Put them back on the tax relapse, somebody used them.
Next you have board appointments. Like I said, I don't think we have any applications for anything that I know that we've requested that the person who was nominated fill one out either, so we have one, one board vacancy for the House of Attorney. Can be asked on now or next time.
I would prefer we not move on this right now.
I move that we postpone it to next month.
I would second that motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Weckl, second by Commissioner Gentry, to postpone this, filling this spot until our next month's meeting. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Forrest.
Do we got any other business, Mr. Chairman?
Any other business from the board? None.
Ain't no other business to come before this meeting, and I move we adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Gentry, second by Commissioner Rice. All those in favor, raise your right hand. We are adjourned.
Safe travels home, folks.
Thank you for coming. How are you, Ray?
A little bit crazy.
Great, that'd be great.
AJ, you look good. Good evening.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I did, yes, I think I did, did I not? I apologize. You know, I'm in favor, thank you, thank you. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Yeah, doing well.